2024. If you are an applicant for a D or U variance, you should be aware that such a variance can only be granted after showing that special reasons for that grant of the variance exists and that variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the zoning plan of the township of Livingston. You should also be aware that in order to be granted such a variance, you will require a firm vote of five members of the seven-member Board of Adjustment. Other variances require a majority of four members to grant that variance. Excuse me. If you're an applicant for any variance and your variance is denied by this board, you have a right to appeal to Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within 45 days of notice of decision, and that court may overturn that, the decision of this board. If you're an objector to any type of variance that has been granted, you too may appeal to Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within 45 days of the notice of decision. If you file an appeal, I ask that you please provide a copy of your complaint to the Planning Administrator Jackie Hollis. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting was provided to the Star Ledger in West Essex Tribune, and a copy was also posted on the bulletin board in municipal building. In addition to having notice posted, notice of this meeting was placed on the township's website. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions or to make statements regarding each application at the appropriate time. When the time comes, if you would like to address the board, please come to the front and use a microphone so we can make sure your comments or questions are part of the record. One announcement is that this building has no water right now. The Department of Public Works is working on it. They really were hesitant to allow us to hold this meeting because of safety concerns. As such, they've given us till 8 o'clock. If anything changes, they will be notifying Jackie, and we'll hopefully can extend. This is unfortunately out of our control, but it's the people in our town that are responsible for our safety, and this is what they think is best. So first of all, don't drink any water. And second of all, we will try to move this along as fast as possible in an expedited manner, I guess. One or two other announcements. If you are here for 12 North Ashby Avenue, Application 2024-15-V, that has been adjourned to June 25th. So that there will be no other further notice. If you're here for that, please feel free to stay or go home. And do we have the applicant for the architect for 9 Westminster Drive? Before I dive in, there's some... Jackie said you had some concerns about the calculations. It's something we try not to debate here because we don't have anyone to... Would you be comfortable coming back next month and getting that cleared up? We don't want to have issues with the numbers. Maybe you can meet with the appropriate people and get it all hashed out, and then we'll make you first. What?
I don't mind.
Okay. I mean, we're not going to get to everybody anyway, so with 42 minutes left. So, okay. Thank you.
So Mr. Chairman, we'll just call that matter and then adjourn it on the record.
Yes.
Right, that matter is adjourned, and there's no need for further notices. Is that correct?
Correct. So that is application number 2024-6-V, June 25th. 7:00 PM.
Tuesday, 25th.
That's 9 Westminster Drive.
On top of that, any of the applications we don't get to due to the buildings not having water, you do not need to renotice, right? That's correct, Jackie? So please just be advised of that. Okay. Ms. Khan, can you call the number two on the list?
Yes. Ms. Khan is here. Mr. Shaw?
I'll call him. I'm sorry.
Here.
Ms. Khan?
Here.
Ms. Mirage?
Here.
Ms. Yuan?
Here.
Mr. Beer?
Here.
And Ms. Hollis, the Planning Administrator, is here tonight, as well as Mr. Jemmas, the Board Attorney.
Please call the first application.
Block 900, Lot 47, 25 Bryant Drive, Application Number 2024-11-V, Pavlos Vankiotis. Applicant seeks approval for a semi-in-ground pool in violation of the following section, 170-96A, 8F, swimming pool setbacks, right side, 20 feet required, 15.5 feet proposed, 4.5 feet variance requested.
Okay. Tell us what you got. Oh.
Mr. Vankiotis, do you swear or affirm that any and all statements you make to the board and any of your testimony today will be true, accurate, and complete? Consider yourself under oath. Would you please state your name and spell it, please?
Pavlos Vankiotis, P-A-V-L-O-S.
Pavlos Vankiotis, P-A-V-L-O-S, V-A-N-I-K-I-O-T-I-S.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now please. Sorry about that.
All right. Yeah, I'm just looking to do a semi-in-ground pool in my rear property, and I'm looking for a 4-and-a-half-foot variance on one of the side yards. And the pool is going to be 15 by 30. It's a temporary structure. It's not a permanent structure. And I'm just looking for the 4-and-a-half-foot variance tonight. And the reason I'm doing it is there's a lot of trees overhanging. I don't want, if I go too far towards the other side, it may interfere with the root system of the trees.
And when you say, you said partially in-ground?
Yeah, the semi-in-ground pool. It goes like 57 inches tall, but half of it could be underground. So it's a temporary structure.
So about 2-and-a-half feet underground, about 2-and-a-half feet up?
I would say about that, yeah.
Something like that.
Depending, I mean, I really don't have a slope in my backyard, so I'm assuming, you know, it's probably be a little bit, a couple inches difference from front to back.
Okay. Anybody in the board have any questions?
Do we have any design plan?
I sent everything. It's not really much of a design to it. It's almost like an above-ground pool that you kind of sink down a few feet. So it's a aluminum-based pool. I gave the manufacturer specifications there, but there's really not much to it. It's like a one, two-day setup.
How is the discharge going to happen when you clean the pool?
When you clean the pool, it's going to have a filtration unit. So it's just going to filter the water. And then when you have to refill it, it's just with a garden hose. It's the same thing as in an above-ground pool.
I have a question.
Sure.
Will the pool itself be fenced?
My property is already fenced. Is that what you just asked?
The pool itself, will it also have?
I don't know if the pool has to be fenced. I think it's just got to be fenced property. My property is completely fenced right now.
Gotcha. And then in winter, you're not going to discharge the water? You're going to just close it?
Yeah, you just close it like a regular pool. Yeah, you just winterize it. That's it. It's like an above-ground pool, but that you could sink in the ground two feet.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. So around the pool, is it just a freestanding pool? Or is anything going to be built around it?
I don't think by local ordinance, I'm allowed to build anything around it. So it's just going to be steps leading?
So the setback is really just where the pool ends?
Right, pretty much. Yeah. Yeah, you're not allowed to build decks or anything, I think, around above-ground pools.
But you said it's not really above ground. Like, how far above the ground?
It's going to be like two feet sunken in and then two feet above.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what is the depth of this pool?
It stands 57 inches high, I believe, and then half of it, pretty much, you're allowed to sink below. So it's like 27 inches you could sink under the ground. It's just a way of doing it a little bit cheaper as opposed to getting an in-ground pool. A lot of in-ground pools run like $80,000. This will be significantly less. It's kind of a new thing, but several, you know, it's been around for quite some time.
Mr. Vankiotis, just so we're clear on the record, there were three photographs, color photographs, that were submitted with your application.
That's correct.
And you were responsible for those, and they accurately show what they depict, and the images there are accurate.
Oh, yeah, of course. Yes.
And you submitted two surveys. One is a survey, both made by Scott M. Bleeker, and both dated March 7th, I think, 2020... Sorry, '24. One is showing, the first survey is showing just the existing conditions.
Yes.
Are those conditions accurate and complete?
Yes.
All right. The second survey depicts a rectangle, 15 by 30 pool, with notations on it of a rear wood deck and a 15.5-foot setback on the right side yard. That's accurate as well.
Yes, correct. Yes, sir.
And based upon your understanding and familiarity with the neighborhood, if the board were to grant this application, it wouldn't have any detrimental effect on any other properties?
No, not at all.
Or the applicable ordinance is right?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a kind of a green fence around in your yard or propose to?
A fence around my yard?
Well, not a fence really, but a green, you know, natural trees or something around your yard that will give you privacy and also the neighbors?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. My neighbor has several tall bushes, so it won't be a privacy, it won't be an issue. I served everybody with the paperwork, but nobody has, you know, come to the meeting tonight.
Any other questions on the board? Does anyone in the public have any questions for this witness? Nope. Does anybody on the board want to make a statement? Does anybody in the public want to make a statement? And does anybody on the board want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Ms. Khan?
I second to approve.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Yuan?
Yes.
Ms. Khan votes yes. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Mirage?
Yes.
And Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you, folks. I appreciate your time. Good night.
Thank you. Yeah. Please call the next application.
Block 1601, Lot 3, 12 Twin Oak Road, Application Number 2024-16-V, Andrew Edwards. Applicant seeks approval for a side and rear yard addition in violation of the following sections, 170-99C2, front yard setback, 40 feet required, 30.9 feet proposed, 9.1 feet variance requested, 170-87L2D, front yard setback, 20 feet required, 5.4 feet proposed, 14.6 feet variance requested, 170-99C3, side yard setback, 10 feet required, 6.4 feet proposed, 3.6 feet variance requested, 170-99C3, aggregate side yard, 30% required, 23.6 proposed, 6.4% variance requested, 170-87CC4, habitable floor ratio, 30% allowed, 40% proposed, 10% variance requested.
Okay, let's see if you guys swear, sworn in.
Can you... We both identify yourselves, spell your names, please.
I'm Andrew Edwards, A-N-D-R-E-W. Edwards, E-D-W-A-R-E-S. I'm the homeowner for 12 Twin Oak Road.
Thank you.
Oh, sit.
And I'm Souleman Dembele. Souleman, it's the name on the drawings. S-O-U-L-E-Y-M-A-N-E, and Dembele, D-E-M-B-E-L-E. I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey, and my license is current.
Mr. Edwards and Mr. Dembele, do you both swear or affirm that any and all statements and testimony you give to the board this evening will be true, accurate, and complete?
I do.
Consider yourselves under oath. Mr. Dembele, would you please recite your credentials to the board?
Yes, I'm currently a registered architect in the state of New Jersey. I graduated from New Jersey Institute of Technology with a master's degree in architecture and received my license about four or five years ago, I think, 2019.
And your license is in good standing?
Yes, it's in good standing.
Have you testified before any planning boards or zoning boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have, a couple of boards.
And you've been qualified as an expert in architecture?
Yes.
I'll respectfully submit that. Mr. Chairman to the board.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There being no objection, the witness is accepted as an expert in architecture.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Please.
All right, so this property is an existing corner lot. The average lot size is about 50 foot wide by 125 foot deep. So this, the existing building is a two-story building. It does have some existing noncompliant setbacks. So the front yard, the existing front yard is 30.9 feet. 40 feet is required. The existing right side yard, I haven't noted as right side yard on the plans, is 5.4 feet, sorry, 6.4 feet, and 10 feet is required. And the existing left side yard is 5.4 feet, and 20 feet is required because it's a corner lot and it's facing a street. The existing rear yard is more than compliant, it's 55.97 feet, and that's more than compliant. So for this project, basically, what we're proposing to do, if you look at the, still on the same page, T001, if you look at the proposed site plan, we are planning to add, fill in the corner and then extend the building a little bit back to the rear yard, about eight feet. So, and for the garage, in front of the garage, we're making a small extension in front of the garage as well. So, and when we do this addition, we're also extending above the existing living room, the existing family room that's at the back, that's only one story. So with the addition, we're trying to match all the existing setbacks, so which is creating about five variances that we are here to seek currently. So I already mentioned the front yard. We have 30.9 that we're matching, and then 40 feet is required. And with the addition, same thing with the right side yard, 6.4 feet is existing and we're seeking, right, the required is 10 feet, so that's another variance that we're seeking. And the right side yard, I already mentioned that as well, 5.4 or 20 feet is required. With the, so with the addition at the corner extending a little bit, so we're reducing the rear yard a little bit, but we're still compliant with the rear yard. So I'll get to the other variances that we're seeking, about habitable floor area ratio later, so. So looking at the existing floor plans of this building, obviously, you can see that it's a little bit of an undersized single-family house. On the first floor, you enter from Twin Oak Road, and it has like the living room and the dining at the front, and the kitchen is a little bit in the middle. It's a little bit awkward. And at the back, it has a hot bathroom and a great room. So, and the basement has utilities and all the stuff, utilities and laundry. And then the second floor has three bedrooms, really small bedrooms, and then it barely has like a master bedroom currently, so, and a full bathroom. So with this addition, basically, we're able to... I'm going to start with the garage first. So we're doing the addition, extending a little bit the garage because the garage is only about 18 feet deep now, the existing garage. So with that addition, we're basically able to do like a little step inside the... Inside the garage, to walk out from the garage and get access to the house and still maintain from the step to the front of garage, about 20 feet, which is pretty standard for a typical car. So, and then the corner and rear addition basically will allow us to do like a lower office space and a full bathroom. We couldn't do a mudroom. It's similar to a mudroom, but the lower walkway is partly a tiny mudroom that we're doing. So, and this would also allow us to like, do like an open concept and demolish all these walls inside, do living room, dining, and then push the kitchen to the back of the house. And also, the second floor, we were able to do like an adequate master, adequate master bedroom and three regular bedrooms and two full bathrooms. So as you can see, by doing this addition, obviously, we're able to increase the curve, make the curve of the house much better, get a much more decent size for the house, and also, so... So, and the design, right, the design also kind of improves a lot as well. So additionally, so the other variance that we're seeking, I'll go back, is the habitable floor area ratio. So currently, this property has about, the maximum allowed is 0.3, so about 30% habitable floor ratio, and the existence is about 25%. So we are increasing it about to 40%. So we're going about 10% over the maximum allowed. But we're doing it in a way that, you know, we're matching all the existing setbacks of the house, so we're not making them worse. And also, in addition, the maximum actual floor area that's allowed is 3,220 square feet, and we're staying way below that because we only have like about 2,480 square feet. So we're not exceeding the maximum floor area, but we are exceeding the percentage, the ratio itself. I personally believe that with this addition, like, we're able to get a much more decent size for the house, and also, the size of this house is not like out of ordinary. It's similar to other homes in the area. And if you look at the other corner homes also in the area, they have similar setback because this lot is a bit narrow compared to what is the zoning requirements. It's only 50 foot wide, and we're not making any of the existing setbacks any worse than they currently are. So I also think that, you know, it does have a positive impact for the design of the building as well. If you can see in the elevations, we're able to improve it a lot as well. So I think, in my honest opinion, is that this project does, right, it improves the building itself. It does not create a lot of detriment for the neighborhood. I think it's a plus. So I recommend the board approve the project if possible. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions on the board with this applicant?
I have a question.
Sure.
Is it correct to say that the side yard setback of 6.4 feet and 5.4 feet are both existing condition, nonconforming?
I'm not saying that they're existing conditions. I'm saying that we are matching the existing setbacks.
That's the existing, that's right.
Correct. And, yeah, and we don't have, yeah.
Okay.
And because, yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just want to elaborate a little bit. And because we don't have additional land that we can purchase and make it wider, so we really can't change the setback at all.
Understood. The front yard 30.9 is also the existing condition?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Nice. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Do you have any rendering on a Briar Cliff roadside? Because most impact that I see is going to be on that side rather than on a Twin Oak Road.
On the rendering of that side?
Briar Cliff Road. Because most of the houses on that roads are not matching what you are proposing to do.
Correct. And I can explain kind of why that also happens. Because the homes that you see in the middle there, that's their main front yard. So they're meeting that. And for us, our property, our main front yard is Twin Oak Road. So we do have about 30.9 feet, our main front yard. But the issue that we have is because the lot is only 50 feet, and the existing already is doing 5.4 feet setback. It is very difficult to change it unless we demolish the garage. But to answer your question, I do not have a rendering of the homes on that side.
I think you do on 8202.
Yeah, let me see.
What was that? Is that what you're looking for? Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I can make, can I make a comment, or are we still doing questions?
Anybody in the audience, in the public, have any questions for this applicant?
Yeah, I just had a clarifying question. Did you want to see the Briar Cliff Road Street, the homes on that street? Is that what your question was?
That is correct, yes.
Yes, there's...
I see the side view elevation there.
Yeah, I submitted some pictures. I don't know if it captures any of the homes in the back. There are some pictures, photos that I submitted with the application. I don't know if there's...
Mr. Chairman, if I could? All right.
But on Briar Cliff Road, there are, I would say, a few homes that match that, what we're trying to do. I would say at least, at least six or seven.
Mr. Edwards, if you wouldn't mind. In the submission that was made, there's one black and white photograph in the site plan, but then there are two sheets which, according to my, have four photographs of the house and the land surrounding it.
Yeah.
Those. Did you take those photographs?
Yeah, I took those. The photos, that's up right now. Those are the photos I took. That's correct.
Is it five photos? I stand corrected. Do those photos accurately reflect and depict the images that exist now at the property?
That's correct.
Yes.
And you also have a survey with, that's entitled Survey with Proposed Site Plan. That accurately depicts what you're intending to do. It's this?
That's correct.
It's the survey that's prepared by Schmidt Surveying. And those accurately reflect what you're looking to do, correct?
That's correct.
All right. And if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, a question for the architect is, if I heard your testimony accurately, I want to make sure we're on the same page, that you say that in the event this application is approved, that any proposals would be advanced by a deviation from the zoning ordinance, and that the benefit from that deviation substantially outweighs any detriment. Is that an accurate statement?
Yeah, that's my statement, so.
And with regard to the floor area ratio, if I heard your testimony correctly, and I just want to be clear,
Yes.
That, that the property and the proposed development have adequate capacity to accommodate the proposed floor area ratio without any detriment?
Yes.
Because the floor, the floor area is not being...
Yeah, we're not exceeding the actual of...
Thank you. I just wanted, I wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you very, very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And actually, I'll just ask one question. If this was a regular-sized lot, then you would only be asking for probably very little on the habitable floor area ratio. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. Okay. Did I ask any questions in the, for the public? If I did, I asked twice. Statements?
Yes, so thank you very much. I think that the proposed renovation addition is really lovely. I think it's beautiful. Your hardship really is dealing with an undersized lot and dealing with three existing nonconforming setbacks. And you're really just asking for habitable floor ratio and side yard, correct?
Yes.
I actually, and you're really just bumping out a little bit and then adding the second floor, correct?
Yes.
Bumping out a little bit in the back for the bathroom, you said. It's not a lot down, on the bottom, the lower level, the square footage that you're adding to the lower level is not significant. So you're really just adding a little bit on the bottom?
That's correct.
And then adding a second, second level, correct?
Correct. The second level, we're sending it back a little bit, so, yeah.
Okay. And so it really is a modest addition?
Yes.
And as the chair pointed out, you were really dealing with an undersized lot. So I just want to make that clear. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else want to make a statement?
I want to make a statement. It's a very small detail that I would really appreciate is you put the proposed elevation and the existing elevation up and down. It's a lot easier for us to understand, to, you know, picture what's going to happen, you know, for the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Is there anybody in the public that would like to make a statement? Okay, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Which one? Ms. Khan?
Ms. Yuan?
Yes.
Ms. Khan votes yes. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Mirage?
Yes.
And Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, let's get another one in. Time's ticking.
Block fifty-nine oh one, lot sixteen, thirteen Walnut Street. Application number twenty-two-four dash seventeen dash V, Two Forty-Five Passaic LLC. Applicant seeks approval to construct a new single-family dwelling and reorienting the front of the house on Old Road in violation of the following sections. One seventy dash ninety-seven C two, front yard setback, sixty feet required, seventeen point four feet proposed, forty-two point six variance requested. Set one seventy dash ninety-nine C four, rear yard setback, fifty feet required, seven point eight eight proposed, forty-two point one two variance requested.
Would you like to swear them in?
I don't believe you're Stacey.
He is Stacey. Yes.
I stand corrected because I'm old and I don't know those. Good evening, I'm Stacy Santal, attorney for the applicant, I want to get the Two Forty-Five Passaic LLC. We'll try to be brief in light of the time constraints. It's actually a rather simple application. We're dealing with the lot on the corner of Walnut Street and Old Road. The house currently faces Walnut Street. It's an older home. And in order to utilize the lot properly, the proposal is to reface the front of the home to face Old Road. The end result is that what used to be the sideline setbacks is now going to be the front and rear sideline setbacks, thus causing the need for these two variances. I should point out that this is an addition. The existing structure is not going to be demolished. And that I will be listening testimony from the architect that will show that this is, I think, not only the best use of the property, but probably the best use for the neighborhood, both aesthetically and as a practical matter, safety matter. And with that, I am going to ask that the architect, Pietro Rosato, be sworn in. And then I'll get his qualifications and he'll explain the application a little bit more.
Thank you very much, Mr. Santal, and please accept my apologies.
You're not the first or the last. Most of my letters say Ms. I'm looking forward to this non-pronoun thing.
You never know, it might work out. Would you please state your name and spell it, please?
Pietro Rosato, P.I.E.T.R.O.R.O.S.A.T.O.
Mr. Rosato, do you swear or affirm that any and all statements that you presented to the board this evening in testimony will be true, accurate, and complete?
I do.
I'll turn it over to counsel to take you through your credentials.
Mr. Rosato, if you would give us a brief history of your education, your experience, confirm that your license is still in play and that, and confirm that you've testified before other boards.
Sure. I graduated from, with a bachelor of architecture from NJIT. I've been licensed since twenty sixteen. I have, my business is located in, licensed in New Jersey, Connecticut, and New York. And that's it.
And your...
I have, I have testified in, in front of the various boards in the state of New Jersey.
And your license is currently...
That's correct, yes. It's active, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would submit that we, that the board consider accepting this witness as an expert in architecture.
Does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There be no objections, the witness is accepted as an expert in architecture.
Mr. Rosato, if you could give us an overview of the proposal, please.
Yes. Okay, so we're looking to expand an existing one-story, single-family dwelling in the R two zone where the existing dwelling is approximately one thousand three hundred and thirty-five square feet. And we're proposing a one-story addition towards the eastern side of the property. And the addition is approximately one thousand two hundred and sixty-two square feet. The property is a corner lot with a current front entrance along Walnut Street. And where the existing driveway is accessed from Old Road. We're proposing to relocate the front entrance to Old Road while keeping the existing driveway curb cut and modifying the driveway to access to the new two-car garage. Since the front entrance is proposed along Old Road, a front yard and rear yard, variance relief is sought where the required front yard setback is sixty feet. Seventeen point forty feet is existing, creating a non-conforming condition. And thirty point zero nine is proposed. The required rear yard setback is fifty feet. And seven point eight eight is existing, creating a non-conforming condition. And fifteen point twenty-six is proposed on the proposed addition. The lot is also non-conforming, where the minimum lot area is twenty-five thousand square feet and fourteen thousand four hundred and fifty-three square feet is existing. And also, the minimum standard, standard lot size required is a hundred and twenty-five feet by two hundred. And we have sixty-one point twelve feet by two hundred and two point fifty-eight feet. So it's substantially smaller. All other bulk requirements in the R two zone are compliant, as noted on the zoning chart that's on sheet T one hundred, which was submitted. The design proposal is to modify the layout of the existing structure and utilize the space as the sleeping areas. As you can see from the plan behind me. The utilizes the space in the sleeping areas of the home where a main bedroom suite is proposed with two walk-in closets, which is right in the front of the house facing Walnut. There are also two existing bedrooms, which will be slightly modified to accommodate larger closets. The existing bathroom will also be modified to accommodate a linen closet, a double vanity. And also, we're proposing a new laundry room within that level of the, of the existing house. We're also proposing, in the rear of the existing house, a new fourth bedroom. The addition is also, the addition is also a one-story structure along the eastern side of the property. So essentially starts from where my house is here, all the way to the back where the, the eastern, for the most, end of the, of the structure is and the garage is. The, the property, the, the new, the new addition is actually set lower than the existing, about six feet lower due to the topography of the, of the land, which slopes down towards the, the eastern side of the property. And so we have steps that are created very similarly to a split-level type of steps. The addition proposes a new cover porch in the facing Old Road, which is right here. And which also can, is connected to an extended driveway, modified driveway. We have a foyer, as soon as you enter, we have a foyer that connects the family room to the left and a dining room, kitchen area to the right. And if you go further to the right, we have a mudroom, a bathroom, and an additional guest room, obviously along with the two-car garage. The addition is connected to the existing house, as I mentioned, with a split-level style staircase that goes to the new addition, as well as two more steps that go down to the existing basement. The, the proposed design, in my opinion, does not pose any detriment to the, to the neighbor, to the neighborhood. It actually enhances the neighborhood, we believe, and fits within the context. We, you know, as you can see from the, from the rendering also...
Why don't you hold that up?
Yep.
Do you want me to hold up for you?
Okay. Actually, I can probably pull it up here.
Stacy, can you mark that as exhibit A one?
Exhibit A one. We're looking at the front of the home, correct?
That, the, the, the new front of the house, that's correct.
So this is your view from Old Road?
It's part of the plan set, yes.
Oh, that's true. Yeah.
Which is, I think I can...
It's colorized.
So we're just going to mark exhibit A one as a colorized version of what we've just described.
Which I can, I pulled it up on the, on the screen. Sure.
Point of emphasis, the curb cut is the existing curb cut.
That's correct.
The driveway now located...
On, on Old Road.
Immediately opposite the, the existing curb cut, as opposed to the driveway having been in the existing structure. So now we're reducing the driveway significantly.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
It's also my understanding that, since we're on Old Road here, that sidewalk that's there now is not necessary and will probably be grass.
That's correct.
As would the walkway, because there's not a sidewalk, correct?
That's correct, yes.
One other question, from Walnut, given the height of the addition, you won't be able to see the addition from Walnut?
No, the, the roof, the top of the roof of the new, the new addition, it's slightly higher than the existing house. However, from Walnut, you won't be able to really see it.
You have a, a second photo, I believe, that shows the neighboring properties existing currently. Can you pull that up for us?
Uh, we, do we? It's, it's not, oh, it's in the exhibit, okay. Sorry, it's here, yeah. In the aerial view that we have?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll hold it up for them. So this is the existing structure, this is Walnut Street, correct? This is Old Road? This is the existing structure, the addition would come this way, correct?
That's correct.
These are the other homes that currently exist on Old Road, right? Based on your observation, the aerial photograph, it doesn't look like the, your structure would be somewhat consistent with the existing setbacks that we have here with the other, the other properties?
From a professional standpoint, no, it's not going to...
You need to get to him, I think. Mr. Shaw is saying... I can hear you, but it's hard to hear you.
From a professional standpoint, I don't believe it's going to affect any of the neighboring properties. And the, the addition is actually setback from that demarcation line that we've showing, the dash line. So, you know, it's not really impacting the, the front of, the frontage, the new frontage of the property.
Your addition is actually thirty feet...
Correct.
On the setback, the existing structure is really the seven-foot setback, correct?
That's correct.
So the addition is actually going to be set even further back.
That's correct. The existing structure is seventeen point forty feet from Old Road, so the new frontage of the house. And the, the new addition is setback even further, and it's thirty point zero nine feet.
One other question.
Mr. Santal, can you mark that as A two?
Also.
And, and Mr. Rosato, you took that, you arranged for that photograph, or that depiction, that aerial?
The aerial view, yes.
Right, and that accurately reflects what's shown on the images there, correct?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
The only other question the board may have is visually from Walnut, potentially, you're contemplating leaving the front door as a false door? If aesthetically, from Walnut, that improves the visual?
Yes, yes, we, we could if we, if it's required. Our client really doesn't want to, but if it's required by the board, then we'd be more than welcome to, to do so, to, to leave the door or to have a door that it sort of looks like a front entrance to the house.
And again, in your opinion, after having visited the, the area, you're satisfied that, that this doesn't present any detriment to the, to the neighborhood?
No.
And that this overall project enhances not only the value, obviously, of the property, but potentially the neighbors and the neighborhood in general?
Absolutely, yes.
And given the lot configuration, this would be the best use of the property and the most logical use of the property?
That's correct, yes.
I have nothing further. Board has some questions.
Does anybody have any questions for this witness?
Yep, I have a question. So the Walnut Street side has some evergreens, right? Some, they're not in good condition currently?
It's heavily shrubbed with shrubs that have not been maintained very well.
So do we intend to replace them or create another green border?
I believe we're going to re-landscape the entire property. We're going to put shrubs on, on the, on the front, like you see there. There's not a tree depicted there, but again, that sidewalk's not going to be there. So there may be a, a tree or two planted. And then in the front, the shrubbery will be redone to make it consistent with what you're seeing on the side. Right now, it's, it's somewhat overgrown.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to mark the fact that the rendering shows a sidewalk, but it's not going to be there?
The reason I bring that up, there's no sidewalks on Old Road right now. And I don't think it's necessary, and I think aesthetically, in the long run, it's better. The driveway goes right to the front door, so we don't need a walkway. It'll also improve our impervious coverage. So I think there's a good chance that, that that'll be modified and we'll, we'll eliminate the sidewalk.
I assume unless, unless the town requires it for some reason, but there's nowhere to go, so I don't think...
Right, there's nowhere to go, there's, it's the sidewalk to nowhere.
Yeah. So I, I think we're probably okay. I mean, we'll leave it up to engineering. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question. First of all, the new construction is going to be a beautiful enhancement to that neighborhood. Familiar with the area. My question is, when you've changed the orientation of the front door, and now you have a long property with the front on Old Road, is, is that side yard in compliance right now up against the, the neighbor that they're next to?
Yes, yes.
And so there's no issue with you being on top of the neighbor with the new construction?
No, the only two variances would be the rear and the front, because now we've changed the, the direction essentially.
Okay, and along Walnut, they're all front doors, and suddenly on the corner, you're going to see the side of the house. How are you planning on visually maintaining it?
Yes, but also, as, as the attorney mentioned, that the, you know, we're going to put some shrubs on. There's already shrubs there that are a little bit overgrown. So the landscaping will sort of, you can't really see from Walnut as, as of now. You can't really see the front entrance regardless. So, so I, I don't think it's really going to be much of a change aesthetically. And we're going to keep, you know, a privacy screen with greens and, yep.
I should point out, if you were to look at these other homes on Old Road, they're currently probably not. Two, I couldn't say for sure, but if you were to look at how tight they are on the lots, this is going to have a much, much bigger sidewalk and setback than any of the existing structures on the property. You know, your property, in essence, almost would still be the area of the yard that you were planning for exploration on, on the side.
Thank you.
I, I got one or two quick questions. The new, the, the addition is just crawl space underneath, there's no basement, right?
Correct.
As I read the plans?
Correct.
And there's no intent to use the attic for any living space?
I don't believe so. We have ten feet, ten-foot ceilings. I don't believe we've gotten to that point yet, but for the attic, but no, as of now, no.
Are you okay stipulating that in the resolution?
I'm okay with, we have ten-foot ceilings, so I don't think that, that, that's practical anyway. I don't, you know.
Okay. But we stipulate that, that's okay?
So that'll be a condition.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Santal.
And as you said, I think you both testified almost, the, the addition is less width than the, the existing house, so you're not encroaching any further. And it's only the, the original house that actually has the major problems with the variance.
That's correct.
And for the front yard variance, I'm seeing forty-two point six feet is your variance requested, because you had yes. I just want to get that on the record, so...
Say that again? Front, the front yard is thirty.
It's thirty point oh nine.
The addition's going to be thirty.
No, yeah, yeah, but the... No, yeah, yeah, but the variance itself is, it's sixty feet required.
Sixty required.
And you have seventeen point four technically.
Seventeen point four on existing.
Right, so it's forty.
Thirty on the addition.
Right, so it's forty-two point six on the existing. Right, that's what we have to.
Mr. Chairman.
You're asking me to do math?
Wait, can I make a comment?
You should know better.
That's not fair.
Can I make a comment, however? This house is really, it's in an R two zone.
Correct.
And it's clearly not twenty-five thousand square feet. It's, it's less than fifteen thousand square feet.
Yeah, it's right now.
Which is really, which is really more in line with an R three, correct? So if you were going, if you apply the front yard setback and rear yard setback requirements from an R three. You're not really asking for seventeen point four, you're asking for twenty-seven point four. And the rear yard would be seventeen point eight, so it's not quite as egregious as what's here.
I should have hired you, you're right.
I'm just trying to help you out.
No, I appreciate that. And arguably, by the way, at thirteen hundred square feet existing, it's almost, it's smaller than even most R four houses. I mean, it's tiny.
It's really, that's really a hardship. It's a very small lot, so I wanted to point that out. And then I, I'm not going to harp on the trees, but I do agree with my colleagues about the side. And I know that it's hidden, it's a tough lot, it's a, it's a very tough lot. But I think the shrubs that you do plant really should be evergreens, maybe green giant arborvitae, just to give the house a shield on that side when people drive by. I just think it would be, it would look nice, you know, you don't want to put a fence up, but if you can put just a couple of green giants there, I think that would be lovely.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Santola, I just want to make sure we're clear. We're, if the board were to approve this application, it would be consistent with the setback requirements as depicted in the letter of denial as well as in the application.
Yes, it would.
So that we're clear. The other thing is that it's understood that there would have to be a change of address, the applicant will arrange for that.
Yes.
Okay, and with regard to the evergreens?
You can make that a condition. I'm a big tree and plant guy. I'm all, I'm all for trees and we don't, we're losing too many of them and not replacing them, if you want. If I can interject my opinion if we're here.
I'll make that a condition that you work that out with the, with the appropriate department, all right? Thank you, that's all I have, Mr.
Okay, any other questions? Any questions from the public? Does anybody want to make a statement?
Yes, I'd like to make a statement. So I have been inside this property, but over twenty years ago, I knew people who lived there twenty years ago. And it felt an inadequate use of the lot because the lot is a hardship. It's, it's an unreasonably, I can say, narrow lot. So definitely does not reflect the zone very well. And I think that changing the address and changing the facade to Old Road is a very prudent modification to this property. It makes so much more sense. Even going past, driving past to see the property before this meeting was a challenge because Walnut is such a busy area. That particular corner is so busy with traffic. So having a front entrance there when you have the opportunity to leverage the, having, being the corner lot. I think it's a very prudent modification, so I really like this, this proposal. I really like it.
Thank you.
I want to make a comment, actually, yes, this is a very beautiful rendering of how to use the old lot. The sidewalk there, though, I'd like to see it stay because you have sidewalk on the other side of Old Road. An effective sidewalking system is consistent of sidewalks, so. I just, my personal statement, but I don't know, like.
We're certainly amenable.
Rendering already, but you were talking about taking it away.
Well, I think we're amenable to doing whatever the engineer wants. If he wants the sidewalk, we're going to give him a sidewalk. And if he doesn't want a sidewalk, then we won't have a sidewalk. I'm okay either way. But again, right, there are no, none of the other homes have a sidewalk, so it would just end at the end of our property. There's nowhere to go and now.
There's a sidewalk on the other side of the street, so.
There is.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody in the public have any statements? Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, and before we vote, that's going to include no access to the attic and.
No living in the attic.
No living in the attic, yeah, yes, you can store, storage, yes, sorry about that. And so the only thing we have to do is, was pointed out to me, is we kind of have to define the trees a little bit because otherwise it's vague, somewhere between one and a hundred, so.
We would have to consult with the engineer because obviously we can't get too close to the corner.
Right.
We don't want a blind spot or anything like that, so we would consult with the engineer about where he wants them.
So it would be a row of, of evergreens within the applicable limits to adequately shield the property from Walnut. Is that adequate, Ms. House? I defer to the boss. Okay.
Okay, Ms. Kana. Ms. Yuan.
Yes.
Ms. Khan votes yes. Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Mirage.
Yes.
And Mr. Beer.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a date with our, the Honorable Harlan Coben this evening, for those of you that know his alumni. I had a missed dinner with him tonight for this, but now, thanks to the water shortage, I'm going to, I'm going to meet him.
Jackie, are we able to call another one or we're done? It's ten after. I don't want to get in trouble. She gave you ten minutes. We'll see what we can do. Our hands are tied, I'm, I'm sorry. Trust me, I prefer to keep everybody moving along. This is. You're eleven, we're twelve, right, okay. Go for it. Five.
Block thirty-six oh one, Lot twenty-two, eleven Ridgewood Drive, application number twenty-two four dash thirteen dash V. Jason Sharonow, applicant seeks approval for a two-story addition, front porch, and replace existing deck in violation of the following sections. One seventy dash eighty-seven B B three habitable floor area, three thousand forty-five square feet allowed, four thousand one hundred and eighty-six square feet proposed, eleven hundred and forty-one square feet variance requested. One seventy dash eighty-seven C C three habitable floor ratio, twenty-one percent allowed, twenty-eight point eight percent proposed, seven point eight percent variance requested.
Would you please kindly identify yourselves and spell your names, please?
Jason Sharonow, J A S O N, S H A R E N O W.
Thank you, Mr. Sharonow.
Douglas Miller from A H M Architects, two eighty-one Main Street, Milburn, New Jersey.
That's Douglas Miller?
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, will you, you're not, are you going to, well, I'll swear you both in. Do you both swear or affirm that whatever statement you make to the board this evening or testimony you give will be true, accurate, and complete?
I do.
Please consider yourselves under oath. Mr. Miller, would you be kindly provide your credentials to the board?
Yes, I've been licensed in the state of New Jersey since two thousand. I've made numerous presentations through boards throughout the state. It's been a while since I've been to Livingston, but I have made presentations here. My license is in good standing and licensed in the state of New Jersey. Is that enough?
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully suggest to the board to consider Mr. Miller as a qualified architect to render architectural testimony.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There being no objection, the witness is accepted as an expert in architecture.
I just have a brief statement that I wanted to share with the board. Just some background of the property before I turn it over to Doug. The home has been in my family since nineteen fifty-seven, when it was built by the Levin Sagner builders. Over the years, there's been some changes, modifications, and additions, with the last being in nineteen eighty-six. I mention that in particular as it relates to why we were asking for relief. Our needs for space and modernization in twenty twenty-four are very different than those needs back in nineteen eighty-six. With my wife and I both working from home post-COVID, two children ages eight and nine enrolled in Livingston School District. The home needs modernization and modifications. I've lived in this area my entire life, graduating high school here, buying my first home, second, now third. Volunteering for the town's first aid squad and working for the police department for the last thirty-two years and being fully immersed in this town. My wife and I, my wife not native to Livingston, both love our community and cannot envision ourselves living elsewhere. Having that said, we hope that the board will understand our need for relief and approve the same. Thank you. I'll dispense with the rest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jason, for the background. Jason and Ariel came to me with the goal of modernizing the houses, as Jason just stated. The house is in the R three zone. It's fourteen thousand five hundred square feet or a hundred by a hundred and forty-five, smaller than required for the R three zone, which is fifteen thousand, so just slightly smaller than required. As Jason mentioned, the house was built in nineteen fifty-seven, as most things that are approaching seventy years old need some modernization and update. What was state-of-the-art in nineteen fifty-seven is, you know, far in the past for what a modern family needs, especially since post-pandemic. Everybody's moved to doing so many more activities in their home and the homes have to be reorganized to function for our modern needs. We're requesting three variances, a C variance for aggregate side yard. We have a hardship of an existing non-conforming side yard combined percentage where thirty percent is required. And we have just less than that at twenty-nine point one five for a deviation of only point eight five percent. And then two D variances, one for habitable floor area and one for habitable floor ratio. I feel these are both the same. I know we just went over them as far as the code sections, but basically where for the habitable floor area, three thousand five hundred and twenty square feet is permitted. We're asking for four thousand one hundred and eighty-six square feet and that's a deviation of six hundred and sixty-six square feet. The habitable floor ratio is required is twenty-one percent. We're asking for twenty-eight point eight percent for a deviation of seven point eight percent. Let me walk you through the plans. Up on the, the screen here shows the site plan, the existing and the proposed. The house is a typical split level. And what we're proposing to do is to square off this right rear corner to make the floor plan a little bit better to the function. And then there's a glass conservatory or one of those glass sunrooms you've seen in so many houses that are all faded and leaking. We're going to take that off. We're also going to modify the deck. The deck is kind of awkward and strange, so we're going to rebuild the deck and make it slightly smaller. So all the changes we're making to the footprint is actually resulting in a decrease in the overall building coverage. A small decrease, but a decrease nonetheless. So even though our floor area is going up, our coverage is going down. If we move to the next page. The smaller drawing is the existing and this is the proposed. And the house really consists of a two-car garage on the existing, a family room space, a guest room slash study, dining room, family room, and kitchen. The kitchen, because of the size of it, is very awkward, very difficult to use. And the plan is very compartmentalized, not what people are looking for. So what we're proposing to do is square up this corner here. It's about ten feet by eight point five feet, so a very, very modest scale addition. But what that allows us to do is really open up the floor plan and create something that functions well. It has the kitchen open to the dining, open to the family room. And although we've only added eighty-five square feet, it's making a dramatic change in how that space feels. By removing the walls, you're taking three smaller rooms and making it feel like one bigger space. So by not adding a lot of square footage, we're giving the impression of more usable space and really opening up. So even though we are asking for floor area, we're being frugal with how we're doing it. Let's see. So the end result is we're going to use the old guest room as like a mudroom slash study space. We're going to put a living room down on the lower level. And the reason why we have this space, it's more like a playroom for the kids. Because in a split level, the issue is that you only have a basement on less than half of the overall house footprint. And by having only a small basement, you need some space for utilities, for storage. So in a house of equivalent size, you would have two or two and a half times the size of the basement to really fill up with programmatic needs. So all those spaces where the kids play or a gym or, or extra study space or, or guest room or wherever else that goes in the basement. We don't have the opportunity to do that here because we don't have a basement. So, you know, they, instead of knocking this house down, rebuilding like it, like so many other houses you see in town, they want it to preserve it. You know, it's been in their family for a long time. So how do they take the best parts of this house and really bring it up to date? So that's what we're doing here. On the second floor, the existing consists of a primary bedroom suite, a one kind of normal-sized bedroom and one rather small bedroom, and there's a hall bath. What we're proposing to do is modify the normal-sized bedroom and the primary suite, reconfigure it, but it's basically the same size. We're taking the old small bedroom and a portion of the old primary bathroom and creating a very small work-from-home study space in this area. And then that, in the back here, we're adding a laundry and a hall bath. And then we're going to go up over the kitchen dining portion of the house and doing an add-a-level to create two en suite bedrooms for their children. And we'll have some vaulted space here. So although the, the numbers say we're, have a six hundred and sixty-six square foot deviation, a lot of that is vaulted space. And the way that your ordinance works is that the floor area is measured to the perimeter of the exterior walls, whether there's floor area there or not. So although the floor area number says six hundred and sixty-six square feet of deviation, it's actually only three hundred and forty square feet of new floor space within the home. So it's a much smaller deviation than.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Miller over here, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. But it's running a little late and I think we have to vacate the building.
All right, I'll wrap it up.
But I just want to, in the interest of time, before you wrap up, I just want to, because you'll have to come back. And when you do, we've all had a chance to look at the plans, we've gone by your house, we've looked at it. You're in an R three and actually your lot is a little even undersized, it's fourteen thousand five hundred square feet. And you're planning on building a house that's over four thousand square feet. That's a large house for that block. My recommendation is that you go back and look at your plans again and come back with something a little bit more tailored for the existing lot. And I don't know how my colleagues feel about this, but this is, after looking at this and hearing what you're saying and looking at the plans, I do think it's a bit oversized.
We have looked at that quite in depth. We're staying within the confines of the existing foundation. So we're not encroaching on our neighbors to the right or left, we're not coming closer to the street, we're not going further back towards the backyard. So essentially, I mean, the square footage is, as Doug had mentioned, three hundred and something square feet of it is just because of the vaulted space. So I get, we've looked at that, you know, of course, I guess we'll have a conversation further about that matter.
Maybe people want to hear from somebody, does anyone else want to chime in?
I do concur with Ms. Khan that I think it's, the bulk is rather large. So if we can reconsider and see if we can optimize the space a bit and reduce the size slightly, we can definitely discuss in length at the next meeting, if possible.
Well, I would just like to note that, you know, if you, I just put up our rendering, our before and after. It's a street view of the existing house and the proposed. Although the style is different, we're only raising the house by seven inches. And on the left side, we're lowering it by a foot and a half. So the overall bulk of the house is not much different than the existing from the outside. I think the square footage numbers really, I mean, the planner is going to testify a lot about, you know, the arguments for the, for the variances. But if we just look at the massing, what we're trying to use is different materials, different textures, different roof lines and massing. If this was just a box without all the articulation and the change in roof lines and breaking down the scale by having.
Mr. Chairman, if I could interrupt for a second. I don't believe we have that color rendering, is that accurate?
No, you have it. This is, it's from the drawings here on the submission.
I don't remember it being as part of my package. That color, that color photo is in there?
I believe so, yeah. We have a copy for you. We can mark it as an exhibit.
No, leave, fine. That's all we have it. I wanted to make sure it was marked.
Okay.
The other thing is, Mr. Chairman, I, I know I'm just a lawyer. A former mayor, when they tell you that you got to get out of a building, unless, unless we've gotten clearances, I'm concerned.
So we should wrap, we should wrap it up, Jackie, from what you're hearing?
We, from what I'm, if I could, Mr. Chairman, it looks like we're going to have more testimony to try and address certain issues. It's going to go well past, we're already past the time. I'm concerned legally that if something were to happen, it'd be unfortunate.
All right, so, so as we close up, I mean, you did hear some feedback. I can just say we do understand the vaulting and everything else, but it all goes to the mass, right? And I'll just throw in that, you know, we do have a, you're going over on the floor area, and you're going over the floor area ratio, which kind of puts a little bit of a red flag that it might not fit so well on the property. So that being said, hopefully we can work, we'll work all this out and let's, June twenty-fifth, right, Jackie? Yeah, yeah. No, 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 please.
I have a hard time understanding that if we're building within the same four walls essentially, how, I don't understand how it works. I wish that, how we're going so, building something that's so far, what is being considered as, as so far.
Mr. Sharonow, I understand that. That's why lawyers are involved in things like this, because the law is the law, and the board needs to be, needs to understand and apply the law with variations when it's warranted. And I think the suggestions that you're getting is, I understand your concern and, and how it might not be, make sense to you, but the law has a certain sense to it, all right? And this would be without any further notices.
Right, this would be without any further notice. And just to follow up with that, you know, we, we do have these two different criteria. And sometimes one comes up, sometimes the other one. But when they start to both come up, it's, was designed to try to control what goes on without, you understand what I'm saying? We're, we're bound by what, by the numbers, a lot, yeah. Yeah, of course, and this, and, and understanding where you're coming from, we do understand too. So we're trying, we'll, we'll talk more, okay? Thank you so much. Once again, apologize that we cannot finish this tonight to your professionals, but we don't want to get in trouble. So we will see you next time. Thank you so much. Thank you for your understanding. Meeting is adjourned.